Room four. Welcome. Residents and visitors are welcome to all meetings of the Village Board. Comments and suggestions on any topic are welcome at any regular meeting. Comments may be made during the time identified for public comment on the agenda, or if the comments pertain to an agenda item at the time that item comes up for discussion. Individuals who wish to comment must be recognized by the president and then speak at the podium, and should begin by identifying themselves by name and address so that the village clerk can add this information to the meeting minutes. Please note that while the Village Code requires two readings of an ordinance, it also provides that a board can waive the second reading and take final action on an ordinance at any time by the vote of the concurrence of the majority of all members then holding office. So again, welcome, welcome to those who have joined us here in person for our meeting, and for those who are watching at home on Comcast Cable Channel six, and for those who tune in later on when we're posted up onto the internet or with the DVD that'll be at the library. So, thank you. And with that, I will ask our village clerk to please call the roll.
President Corrigan.
Here.
Trustee Sussman.
Here.
Trustee Reynolds.
Here.
Trustee Shavitz.
Here.
Trustee Ballerine.
Here.
Village manager Scolera.
Here.
Village attorney Lance Malina.
Here.
Village attorney Michael Mars.
Here.
Also present, village clerk Kathy Haley. Not present tonight, trustee Saatchi. Do we know if trustee Sussman?
She's not.
She's not? Okay.
Thank you. So, we do have a quorum, so we shall proceed. And with that, I will ask you all to join, join us, please stand, and I will ask trustee Sussman if he would please lead us into pledge today.
(Inaudible) United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation on the ground, in the visible of liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and we have no particular presentations by any groups or individuals today, so I will turn to the audience and ask if anybody has a comment they would like to address the board with. Alex, please.
Um, Alex, go ahead, go three, two, three, four, South Harlem. Getting him as president, trustees, those in attendance, and to those watching at home. Sir, I come before you and the Village Board on behalf of the Lions Club tonight. It is my pleasure to inform the public of our upcoming annual chicken dinner. It will be held here in Town Hall on Sunday, April 7th. It is from 11:30 to 5:30. Tickets are $12 for adult and five per child under the age of nine. Anyone needing tickets can contact me at 708-442-5704. Also, we are on the Lions Club, um, asking for nominations for Person of the Year. A tradition from the 1950's. Anyone who wants to nominate someone who has volunteered their time over years for the benefit of our community can certainly send those invitations to my address at 3234 South Harlem here in Riverside. And sir, that's all I have for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Alex. Good luck with the chicken dinner. I know the attendance has been quite well the past number of years, so good luck with that. Uh, anybody further? Gint?
Good evening, everyone. Gint Leotzupenicas, 265 Northwood Road. I'm here on behalf of the Olmsted Society to update you on recent news and events of the society. Our first inaugural, uh, landscape workday of the season took place last Saturday. Took place at Harrington Park along Harlem Avenue. Volunteers were there to pick up trash and trim bushes and remove invasive species, and I think you'll see a nice improvement along Harlem Avenue there at Harrington Park. Our next workday will be on the 27th of April from 9 to 12. It's a Saturday. It'll be taking place in Patriots Park. We invite all community residents and other interested parties to join us on that day. There'll also be a special Arbor Day celebration taking place on that day, in which we'll be planting a tree. Also on that day, Riverside Brookfield High School will be, uh, having its, uh, Day of Service, uh, in which the students of RB will be fanning out to the Peter suburbs and, uh, doing volunteer work throughout the communities. And we were approached, uh, the Olmsted Society was approached by one of the members of the Parents Teacher Organization to assist them, both in terms of providing, uh, adult volunteer supervisors for the kids that day, in which we will be doing, as well as asking for some of our financial support to help offset some of the costs of that day. And so, the Olmsted Society, uh, voted to donate $500 toward their cause. And so, uh, we're happy to be a part of that on many levels. Also, along the same lines, the, uh, the Society donated $700 to the Public Works Department to, uh, offset costs of the, um, the tree watering bags that are used in, uh, parkway trees that are planted throughout the, uh, the community. Upcoming in April on the 17th at 7 o'clock in the evening at the library will be our next, uh, lecture, which we sponsor, co-sponsor with the library. Uh, it's entitled, "Environmental Conservation After Dark." Drew Carhart of the Illinois Coalition for Responsible Outdoor Lighting will be giving a presentation that evening about the effects of man-made light on our environment, and he'll be reviewing responsible, uh, approaches to outdoor lighting. I think over time, uh, there's been this idea of too much light being generated and drowning out the night sky, and, uh, there are ways to mitigate that. And, uh, Mr. Carhart will be talking a little bit about, uh, what those effects are and what we can do to help mitigate them. And then lastly, next, uh, next month in April, um, is our annual poetry contest. We'll be soliciting submissions for that contest. It's open to, uh, grade school, grade school students primarily, but this year, um, we'll be opening it up to high school students, uh, from a visual arts standpoint. So, not only will it be a poetry contest, as it's been the past, but, uh, the Reflections on Riverside, uh, contest will now include, uh, imagery as well, provided by the high school students. So, that's all I have for this evening. Thank you very much for your time.
Again, thank you. Thank you for the update, as well as calling to the board's attention and to our residents' attention, some of the volunteer efforts and monetary contributions that are consistently made by the Frederick Olmsted Society. So, thank you. Anybody further at this point? If not, we shall move on with the agenda. Next up are the reports of the village officers, village president's report. Uh, first, I just wanted to call to everyone's attention that tomorrow, um, March 19th, we have the Riverside Public Open House for the Central Business District Plan. That is a project that has been worked on, on a grant-funded basis on behalf of the village by the Chicago Metropolitan Agency for Planning. They started that project just about 12 months ago. Um, have put a lot of effort into it. They have, and you folks out there have put a lot of effort into it, these board members have. And, um, uh, this is their draft plan. It's been available for a number of weeks now, um, on their website. Uh, we've put out e-flashes letting all of you know about that, so take a look at it if you get a chance, but, uh, whether you can look at it or not, come into the Village Hall tomorrow from 5 to 7 PM. It's on an open house basis. Come in, uh, the plan will be on display. There'll be various poster boards. There'll be opportunities for you to say, uh, kinda like this, kinda don't like that, did you think about this? It's, uh, last chance to speak up, and we'd sure like to, uh, give you another opportunity to do that. So, anytime from 5 to 7, if you could come into the Village Hall tomorrow, would be greatly appreciated. Um, I know that, um, uh, a number of the businesses in town have put up posters alerting our residents today. I know that, uh, tomorrow is a normal meeting night for the Chamber of Commerce, and they have moved their meeting back, uh, in time a little bit, so, uh, so as to allow their members the opportunity to come here and provide their comments. So, we appreciate that, and thank you to the chamber. Um, next, uh, just, uh, an update. I've mentioned this a few times, uh, over the past months. Um, April 16th, 2013, the American Planning Association will be in the Village of Riverside. Uh, the week of April 16th is the National Conference for the American Planning Association being held in Chicago this year. Their offices happen to be in Chicago. Uh, during their national, uh, con- conference each year, their convention, um, the planners who attend, uh, go out into the locale in which, uh, the convention is being held to look at significant, um, uh, architecture, planning, um, whatever issues that would be of interest to them. They selected the Village of Riverside, uh, this year. So, uh, the American Planning Association is, uh, having, uh, one of their workshops in the Village of Riverside. They will come out here on the morning of April 16th. The Riverside Historical Society and the Frederick Olmsted Society has been, uh, is providing the volunteers for that effort. Um, we will, uh, when we'll greet them when they arrive, uh, provide a lecture, uh, for them, and then, uh, give them a walking tour throughout the village. Uh, they're coming out on a motor coach, and, uh, when they're done, we'll put them back on that motor coach and send them out. Last count, I understand, there's about 30 or so individuals registered, uh, so there may be, um, more. There's a fee for that, that the APA charges. Uh, that fee includes a box lunch, which is being provided by the, uh, businesses here in the Village of Riverside, uh, so we appreciate that. And, uh, it's an opportunity for, uh, for us once again to showcase the village, um, to, uh, people who certainly know the Village of Riverside. Anybody who studies architecture or landscape, uh, certainly has studied Frederick Olmsted and certainly is aware of the Village of Riverside. However, most of those people probably have never been here, so it's an opportunity to get people out here and, and get them to experience our, our community. So, that's on April 16th. Also, just in the way of a couple of other items, um, uh, village manager, and I today met with, uh, the new owners of the, uh, Suburban Life Newspaper. Um, the Suburban Life Newspaper was purchased in the fall by, um, Shaw Media. It previously had been owned by Gatehouse Media. So, we invited them out here to meet us, and they spent, uh, some time with, uh, with Peter and myself. Brought them up to speed as to what we're all about, why we're special, um, what, what we, what we would like them to do, uh, in the way of local coverage for this community. Uh, they seem to be wanting to make a, um, a commitment to go back in that direction, uh, of, of trying to provide more local coverage, which I think is, is important to the Village of Riverside. So, we had an opportunity to meet with the owner, owner publisher, and also with the managing editor. Uh, we provided him, we provided them with contact information, uh, for some of the individuals who, in town, who can provide them with more information. We, uh, gave them contact information for the Frederick Olmsted Society, Chamber of Commerce, Riverside Arts Fair, and Riverside Historical Commission. So, um, um, subscribe to both of our newspapers in town. It's important. (laughing) Also, I will be spending, uh, uh, this Wednesday, March 20th, in Springfield with the West Central Municipal Conference, uh, with mayors from the West Central. Uh, we have a number of meetings scheduled with, uh, agencies, uh, of the state of Illinois, and then I will have an opportunity to get in front of our five, um, state legislators, our three representatives, our two senators, uh, to make sure that they understand, um, our needs here in Riverside, and to, um, uh, look them in the eye and tell them not to touch local government revenues. Uh, it's too important to our budget, so I will make, make that plea to them personally on, on Wednesday. And with that, I am finished, so I will turn it over to village manager Scolera.
I do not have a report this evening.
All right. And village attorney Lance Malina?
(Inaudible).
Well, maybe I can find a few more things to talk about. (laughing) Okay, moving on to the next item on the agenda. Approval of the consent agenda. On the consent agenda this evening is the approval of the bills of March 18th, 2013. Approve Village Board of Trustees Executive Session Meeting Minutes of March 4th, 2013. Approve Village Board of Trustees Regular Meeting Minutes of March 4th, 2013. File and Review Landscape Advisory Commission Meeting Minutes of February 12th, 2013, and file and review Riverside Parks and Recreation Commission Meeting Minutes of January 28th of this year. Does any trustee require any of those items to be removed for further discussion? If not, then I will ask for a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda.
So, a second.
So, a motion by trustee Reynolds, a second by trustee Shavitz, and if you would please call the roll.
Trustee Sussman.
Aye.
Trustee Reynolds.
Aye.
Trustee Shavitz.
Aye.
Trustee Ballerine.
Aye.
Thank you, and that consent agenda is adopted. Moving on to the reports, uh, first off, finance, personnel, and preservation, trustee Saatchi, and once again, he is not here, so we shall ask our village manager to step up and, uh, sub in for him on these two items.
Okay. The, uh, the first is a ordinance authorizing and providing for the issuance of $1,425,000 general obligation refunding bonds, a series 2013 of the Village of Riverside, Cook County, Illinois, for the purpose of refunding certain outstanding waterworks and sewerage revenue and alternate bonds, prescribing all the details of said bonds and providing for the imposition of taxes to pay the same, and for the collection, segregation, and distribution of the waterworks and sewerage system operated by said village. Further authorizing and providing for implementing the plan of refunding for waterworks and sewerage revenue and alternate bonds. In 2005, the village issued alternate revenue bonds for water system improvements with remaining interest rates between 3.6% and 3.85%. Due to historically low interest rates, the village may have the opportunity to refund, refinance the remaining bonds to achieve notable savings. Village staff met with representatives from Standard &amp; Poor on February 28th and received our rating letter and report on March 7th. I am pleased to announce that the village's bond rating was upgraded by Standard &amp; Poor to double A+ as compared to the 2011 bond rating of, of A lowercase a2 by Moody's. This village, the village is now one level below triple A. Spear Financial will be utilizing a negotiated sale to bond buyer RW Baird, who will then sell the bonds to investors. Preliminary calculations are that the rates, uh, uh, will be able to secure rates from 2 to 3%. Actually, we, we received word that, um, it's anticipated that the savings that the village will receive by doing this will be approximately of $93,000 before any of the fees are, are, are added to that.
And I think you, what, were at an estimate of 70 to 80?
Correct.
Prior to the upgrade in our credit rating?
Yes. Um, and so, um, we, I asked that, that the village board, as part of this, and included in your packet, um, we've provided you an updated, um, the village attorney has not had an opportunity to review the, the completed draft agreement with Chapman. Um, they've provided, um, the feedback back, so we're asking that the motion that you, you make this evening include that the approval is subject to final review and approval by our village attorney. Um, we do have a representative here from Spear, Brenda Houston, uh, in the event that the board does have any questions, as well as our finance director, Jessica Francis.
Thank you, Peter. So, if I could first, before we have discussion, ask for a motion and a second to approve this ordinance, and this is the second reading of this ordinance. We first covered this at our last meeting, so this, approve this second reading of this ordinance, subject to final, uh, review and approval by our village attorney.
So, a second.
So, we have a motion by trustee Reynolds, a second by trustee Ballerine. So, is there a discussion on this item? Positive comments? Negative comments? Everybody's, uh, I mean, I, I'm very pleased with the situation.
I think it's wonderful that our, our rating was upgraded.
Okay, and we did, uh, alert our residents to the fact of the upgrade in our rating, so we thank you, and we thank our, uh, finance director and our village manager for the efforts to bring those benefits to the village, and as, as we pointed out in our e-flash, those village, those benefits extend, uh, out over a period running through 2019, so it's a benefit that will give us a little bit of a kick each, each year, which is good news. So, with that, hearing no further discussion, I will ask village clerk Haley to please call the roll.
Trustee Sussman.
Aye.
Trustee Reynolds.
Aye.
Trustee Shavitz.
Aye.
Trustee Ballerine. Aye.
Thank you, and that bond, this bond ordinance is, is adopted. So, um, I guess we should just make the offer to, uh, the state of Illinois in case they need to talk to anybody here in the village about how to upgrade your, your, your credit rating. We could, I'll be, well, matter of fact, I'll be there on Wednesday. How do I talk to them then?
Carry the message.
Carry the message. Okay. All right, thank you, Peter. Next item.
Uh, the next item is ordinance amending the budget. Uh, budget amendment number one for the fiscal year beginning January 1st, 2012, ending December 31st, 2012, for various additional expenditures and revenues. This ordinance amends the 2012 budget to include various expenditure and revenue items not previously budgeted, and to adjust previously budgeted items. These include projects that were approved by the village board during 2012 and require a budget amendment. During 2012, the general fund actually spent less than was budgeted. However, some individual departments spent more than previously budgeted. In the debt service fund, the village incurred unbudgeted expenditures associated with two closed special service areas from 1998 and 2000. The village was billed by the Cook County Treasurer for outstanding liability balances from 98 and 2000 for over-collection of special service areas number 17 and 18 and subsequent refunds. At the time, the village received payment in excess of what was due. The county issued the refunds, however, the village was never billed by the county for the outstanding balance and overpayment until 2012. In the police pension fund, the village incurred unbudgeted expenditures associated with a pension refund. On an annual basis, the village does not traditionally issue refunds unless an employee separates from the village and is not yet eligible for a pension. This ordinance amends the annual budget to reflect the changes outlined in Exhibit A that is attached to the ordinance. The auditor, um, actually is scheduled to be present at the May 20th Village Board meeting, where he will provide an overview of our 2012 activity and financial statements. Also at the meeting, the village board will be asked to accept the financial statements in the form of a comprehensive annual financial report. The CAFRA will be completed and distributed in early May. Since this is only a first reading, no motion is required at this time.
So, is there any discussion on, uh, this first reading of this ordinance? Hearing none, then we shall, uh, move this item to, uh, the next, uh, meeting agenda for a second reading. Thank you, Peter. Anything further?
Um, that is all I have.
Public Works Transportation Utilities, trustee Sussman.
Thank you, Mr. President. Tonight I have a first reading of an ordinance amending the Village Code of Village of Riverside relative to private wells. The state of Illinois Department of Natural Resources has for many years discouraged reliance on wells in the areas around Lake Michigan. Use of Lake Michigan water, particular in communities, particularly in communities closer to the lake, was encouraged instead of, to prevent, in order to prevent drops in the water table and aquifers in the area. All Riverside residents have access to Lake Michigan water for drinking, irrigation, and other purposes, and use by residents of wells for irrigation or other purposes is not consistent with the goals of maintaining the water table and aquifers for the people who are solely dependent on private wells. Wells also pose health risk through potential cross-contamination of the village's potable water supply. Currently, there is no outright prohibition on use of wells in Riverside, and the Department of Public Works has therefore proposed this ordinance. The proposed ordinance amends the existing Village Code provisions mentioning wells to make clear that use of wells is prohibited. Under this new ordinance, no new wells may be created, and existing wells must be kept closed and dormant. This is the first reading, and if the board concurs with the ordinance, it will be up for approval at the April 1st, 2013 regular meeting.
Thank you, trustee Sussman. Is there any discussion on this?
We know, Peter, do you know how many wells we're aware of, exist in Riverside, private wells?
Um, I think we are aware of a handful of wells. Um, I believe most, if not all of those are kept and dormant.
No active wells?
Not that I, that I, I can have that information.
Just curious.
I don't think it would take that much research to pull that together. Um, our number one concern is, is really has to deal with the cross-contamination, um, as well as the, the water table. Uh, it is kind of like a good neighbor policy for the communities to the west of us who are reliant on wells.
Okay, thanks.
And this was brought to your attention through the efforts of our public works?
Our water, right, our water superintendent.
Right. Thank you, so this will be moved to the next meeting for a second reading. Trustee Sussman, is Ray, Richard, please.
Uh, Richard Ray, 262 Lionel Road. I'm assuming that this isn't going to impact on a person installing a geothermal system. Is that correct? One kind of geothermal system consists of drilling a hole straight down, or several holes, straight down, 250, even 500 feet. I'm not going to try to explain with a geothermal.
Well, I, I know what's geothermal. Uh, in order for a resident, a property owner who's interested in putting in a geo- thermal, uh, well or pump, it actually would require approval from the EPA, and, uh, as well as a village engineer, in this case it would be our water superintendent, would have to sign off on it, but it would require an EPA permit in order to do something like that.
But it's not going to be barred, straight out by this ordinance you're, you're approving here, or you're considering?
This, this ordinance deals primarily with existing wells. Does that draw water out of the water table? I, I don't know how.
Well, you, but you could consider the well.
But it doesn't draw water out?
No.
Okay. Well, invite us over to your house if you get it installed, I'll take a look.
Well, if I was 10 years younger, I'd do it.
No, thank you for calling to our attention.
Mm-hmm. I think that, uh, geothermal's a, what I call a no-brainer for anybody constructing a new home. Uh, I can't even believe that anybody, you could roll the cost of that into your mortgage on a new home, and you'd never even know that a few thousand dollars spent, it'll pay off in terms of, uh, heating costs and air conditioning costs forever. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ray. So, we will take up this item one more time at our next meeting. Trustee Sussman, anything further? Moving on to public work, uh, public safety, health, and landscape, trustee Reynolds.
I have nothing this evening, Mr. President.
River Parks and Recreation, trustee Ballerine.
I have one thing this evening. It's a resolution regarding delegation of the negotiating authority of the West Central Cable Agency, which is the WCCA. The Village of Riverside Cable Franchise Agreement was last approved in 1998 and will expire at the end of 2013. The village is a party to an agreement forming an intergovernmental agency called the West Central Cable Agency, designated to be more efficiently and effective at exercising the members' combined and shared powers to regulate cable operators under federal and state law. Village's cable franchise agreement is substantially identical to the franchise agreements granted by the other members of the WCCA, and the members continue to share common interests and cable-related community needs. As a result of the communities' commonalities, WCCA agreed to come together to negotiate the next cable franchise agreement rather than communities working one-on-one with Comcast. In order for the WCCA to act as representative to member communities, the task resolution must be enacted by participating members' board of trustees. The ultimate approval of the franchise agreement then results from the negotiations will stand, will still be granted by the village board based on the recommendations of the agency. So, a motion to approve a resolution, resolution of the Village of Riverside, Illinois, delegating negotiating authority to the West Central Cable Agency.
Second.
There's a motion by trustee Ballerine, and a second by trustee Shavitz. Is there any discussion on this item? Peter, you have anything to add? I know you, you've done most of the work on this so far.
Sure. Um, uh, as I was speaking to someone about this earlier, I, I think this is a, a good idea in that, um, some other communities who tried to go, uh, at it alone have not had the same amount of success as communities who've come together. Comcast, uh, is, uh, they have a set model franchise agreement that they work off of, and the member communities in our discussion felt that by coming together, we would, we would be able to reduce our attorney fees, uh, to negotiate the, the new franchise agreement, that we all had similar interests, and, and we just all felt that it would be in our best interest to come together to work as one rather than each one working individually on their own.
And we've been in this group for quite a while.
Very long time.
Yeah. Thank you, Peter. Um, is there any further comment? If not, I would ask you, Kathy, please call the roll.
Trustee Sussman.
Aye.
Trustee Reynolds.
Aye.
Trustee Shavitz.
Aye.
Trustee Ballerine.
Aye.
Thank you, and that motion, uh, to enter into this contract or this, uh, authority to negotiate is approved. Trustee Ballerine, anything further?
No, Mr. President.
Building, planning, and zoning, trustee Sussman, do you have anything? There is a meeting this week?
Uh, there is a, Thursday, there is a zoning board meeting for a variance, for a home on variance.
So, there's zoning board meeting on Thursday?
There's a zoning board meeting on Thursday, as well as plant commission tomorrow night. Uh, plant commission will be looking at a couple of sign applications, uh, and, uh, the CBA will be looking at residential areas.
Good, okay, thank you very much. Um, and, uh, last up, public relations, economic development, open government, trustee Shavitz?
Uh, in keeping with the theme of this evening, uh, I won't take a bite at that.
Okay, we'll let that one go. So, and that closes the reports. Um, we are done with the business section of our meeting. We, uh, have the need for an executive session today, uh, for the purpose of reviewing closed meeting minutes. Uh, we will not reconvene an open session, and we will not take any action in closed session, um, of a final nature. So, with that, I would ask for a motion and a second to review, to, to adjourn to executive session.
Second.
Motion by trustee, uh, Reynolds, second by trustee Shavitz. Uh, if you would please call the roll.
Trustee Sussman.
Aye.
Trustee Reynolds.
Aye.
Trustee Shavitz.
Aye.
Trustee Ballerine.
Aye. Thank you, and the meeting is adjourned.